Okay, the meeting's live.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. It is 7 o'clock PM, so I now call to order the 2070th meeting of the City of College Place City Council meeting. Will the clerk please take role call?
Yes. Councilmember Bobbitt.
Present.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Nyhagen.
Present.
Councilmember Selby has requested to be excused. Councilmember Sherman.
Present.
And Councilmember Trope has requested to be excused. We also have, of course, Mayor Hernandez, City Administrator Rizatello, Chief Tamaris, Finance Director Brian Carlton, City Attorney Ray Colwell, Public Works Director Paul Hartwig, Human Resources Manager Sean Doring, Deputy Clerk Holm, who is leaving us and myself. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nyhagen, I apologize, I didn't ask beforehand, but can I impose on you to get us started with a few words?
Absolutely. Shall we bow heads? Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can do the business of the city. We ask that your direction, that we will do according to your will. I thank you for each member, Father, and I thank you so very much for those that are employees of our city. They do such a good job and we thank you for them. And Lord, I just want to ask another prayer for those that are suffering from the virus, that you will give them a comfortable night. I thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Nyhagen. Okay, it is now time for public comment. Do we have anybody ready to that requested to speak?
Um, there was a little confusion on that, so I don't have a listing, but I did tell some people that if they logged in as an attendee, they could raise their hand and we would call on them. So we do have some attendees, if they can hear us and want to raise hands.
I cannot see on my side, so.
Oh, sorry, I just gave you that ability.
Okay. Okay.
So I believe Carolyn's taking care of allowing them to be able to speak, so you can just call on them.
Okay, so I see Mr. Laeger, would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening, everyone. The the whole process here, we were, a lot of us down here at the end of DCO Road thought that this was going to be more of a panel discussion rather than a public comment. So that, we're a little bit out of sync, I guess we could call it. In the, in the meeting with the engineers, there's a lot of, of history that some of you and obviously they don't know about, okay? The reason that, and Paul probably, you know, Paul knows about it. I'm trying to remember the guy's name, I think it was Mike Patterson. You know, this is years ago before Whitman ever went in or while Whitman was going in and DCO was connected. The reason that DCO Road was narrowed was there was no money. That was the bottom line. They didn't have the money to move that, that, everybody talks about the electrical box. It's not, it's a, it's a pressure reduction, big concrete vault. It was already there. There is a little Pacific Power transformer in my front yard, but that's, that's very, very small. I can remember when Paul, Pat Ray, and there was one other person stood right out in the roadbed where it was and said, there's not gonna be, they would have had to put a retaining wall in, and there was no money for it, okay? The agreement in, in the, in the document that JUB did, it was that there was an agreement given that I could park my commercial vehicles out there. The whole reason that DCO Road was narrowed was these four options that JUB came up with are kind of a rehash of what originally happened, okay? The reason that you, that you don't want to do a cul-de-sac or a dead end down here was because you guys would have to go through and you'd have to do all your environmental and your water studies again, to extend the culvert, okay? The chain, the chain across the, the road came up, but it was going to be at the other end of the road. That was with Mike Patterson at, at Council Chambers years ago. And one of the, one of the, kind of the side effects of narrowing DCO up was that it would slow traffic down. That's exactly what it's done, because everybody was worried about people getting around Home Depot going in and being faster to get to the light and going tearing up DCO and so like that. And it does, it slows things down. There's been comments, one of the, the things that brought this on was the complaint by Ms. Toomey about the, the bus stop. We've, we've, we've contacted the bus barn and the dispatcher, the bus stop will never be on DCO Road again. The safest place, there's no grade out on Whitman, you can go directions, very long distances, the whole nine yards. If you put it, when it was on DCO, there's a grade, it's icy. It doesn't matter if there's no cars or tons of cars parked. It, it, when it gets covered in ice, it's not a primary street, so it doesn't get plowed first. So according to the bus barn, this safety issue is moot. It's never going to be on DCO Road again. It, it belongs on Whitman for the safety of the kids. As far as emergency vehicles, the, the fire department comes up and down DCO Road and, and I might check with, with the chief, but I've never heard of any complaint about an emergency vehicle not being able to navigate DCO Road. The other thing is, in this report, it talks about, and in the, in the video, you know, the, the presentation they did, they kept talking about residential, residential. My whole property is zoned commercial. That was done when you brought, part of my property was in the county, okay? When you brought it in, you would have had to have access to commercial via a residential easement. You can't do that according to some of your predecessors. So everything was brought in as commercial. Number two, all of these commercials, they, they talked about these commercial vehicles being parked. There's a, in, in the, in the city ordinances, it says that a tractor that is not connected to a trailer is exempt. Okay, and these commercial trailers. What commercial trailers? We don't, I mean, we don't, I mean, I can, but we don't bring 53-foot, you know, trailers and park them in front of my house, okay? The other thing is, is in the ordinance, it also says that a contractor is exempt from the parking as long as they're, you know, providing services.
That, that is the five-minute limit.
Bottom line is, is that, is that I don't see where, I, I think there was a lot of things missed, and the other thing is, I thought this was going to be more of a back and forth discussion. And I think there was a lot of us down here that thought we were going to be, you know, the residents were going to be considered as panelists so that we could have a back and forth discussion, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laeger. Carolyn, do we have anyone else wanting to speak?
It doesn't look like anyone's raised their hand. It could be on their cellphone, and I believe it's star nine.
Ms. Capping has her hand raised now.
Ms. Capping, is that just it?
Hi.
Okay, now I see her. Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Capping, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you so much for hearing us tonight. I want to reiterate kind of what Mike is saying is that we thought we would have input kind of as a back and forth. I live on the east side of DCO. I'm a part of the board member of the DCO Home Association. I'm not the president, but I am the at-large member. This is discussion concerning, the last discussion was that you had indicated getting, talking with the association board members about parking situation on our side of the street. As far as I know, we have not been contacted in any way to talk about this. We do try to maintain the spots that we have, but we also use the on-street parking for contractors that come in to help our services. There are 10 residents that are on the east side of DCO Road. It's not a one-home residence. It's 10 households that will be very affected by this discussion and how this comes about or what is decided. So I would very much appreciate if we could have time to talk with you as residents on this street that is narrowed and has been narrowed for quite a long time. And we have made it work because the city did run out of money. I was here when it was dead-ended before Whitman went through, and there was a lot of discussion about what's going to happen or what did happen. And so it's an ongoing, it's been an ongoing discussion, and I much would prefer if we could all get together and talk this through before anything is decided and truly get input about the people that live here on this street on a day-by-day basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capping. Is there anybody else slated to speak or ready to speak?
We do have a phone-in caller. I could just go ahead and promote them to talk, to see if they wish, if they would want us to talk. Okay, I'll go ahead and do that now.
Hi.
And they're muted, and if you're star six, I think, Lisa, is that what it is?
I believe so.
And when you're on your phone, press star six to unmute.
Okay, I, I believe we have somebody on the phone. Last four numbers are eight, six, two, zero. If you wish to speak, you need to press star six to unmute yourself. Okay, doesn't look like they were prepared to, wanting to speak. Do we have anyone else, Carolyn?
We do not.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the consent agenda then, which includes the agenda for today, March 9th, 2021. The council minutes from February 23rd, 2021. Council minutes from March 2nd, 2021 workshop. The purchase of a new pickup for fire captain and surplus, 2006 Chevy one-half-ton pickup. The acceptance of the FEMA COVID grant for the fire department and excusing Councilmembers Selby and Trope for, today for their absence. Are there any items that the council would like removed from the consent agenda at this time? Okay, see none. Is there a motion? To accept.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, nor do we have public hearings. So we're going to move on to the action items. The first item is the DCO Road safety issues. So do we, so we just heard from some further citizens, we do want to make note and remind that there can't be any private conversations, so any conversations that would have been had with residents have to be done in a public forum. And if you recall last week's presentation, the the cusp of the issue had more to do with that we are now in violations of codes and are, where it stands is out of standards.
Question?
I'm sorry, who rose, raised a hand?
This is Councilmember Jerry, have a question.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to go around for questions in just a minute. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that's what the conversations were, but please, when it comes around to you, if you want, if you have something else to bring up or remind the rest of the group, please do. Okay, so we'll start with Councilmember Bobbitt.
Yes, my question was, were those who made public comments still available to ask questions of and to be present to listen to this discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, Councilmember Bobbitt, do you have anything else you'd like to?
Not at this point.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Councilmember Peterson.
At this point.
Okay, Councilmember Cleveland.
No questions at this point.
I'm sorry, I, I already called him Councilmember Peterson, right? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Nyhagen.
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Sherman.
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So if you have any further comment or questions that you would like, please use the, the button to raise your hand. Councilmember Cleveland.
Mike had suggested some complicating factors regarding the fact that his property is zoned commercial. He also suggested there were exemptions regarding the trailers that he has parked there. He also mentioned an exemption regarding contractors parking on the street. And the gal, I think it was Stephanie, had suggested that they had not been, the, the Housing Association hadn't been contacted. So I was hoping maybe there's someone on our staff that could address. You know, was Mr. Laeger's understanding of our code correct or there some misinterpretations? And have we reached out to contact the Housing Association?
Just real quick, I wanted to mention, so we haven't, reaching out to the homeowners association was not done on a private basis because we can't do that. We did invite them to the workshop. And that's where it's at. Otherwise, we would have to hold a special meeting, I think, for that, and and I, I'm going to let somebody else speak regarding the code, so maybe you all can help out with that. However, I do want to remind that the issue had to do with it being out of, the, out of regular, what's the word? Out of code, I'm sorry, I can't think of the exact word. That, that now the way the street is, it's not as it should be. Well. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Norma, I would, I would ask maybe if Chief Tamaris chiming about this, because keep in mind that this whole issue arose because we also had residents on the street file citizen complaints about it through the police department. That was where the originated, so maybe Troy, if you could chime in about that, and then Ree, if you could add about the codes. I will say that Mr. Laeger is correct about his home being zoned, the commercial, though.
And, and it's just his property.
Yeah.
Let me ask real quick, Ms. Cole, did you want to speak before Chief Tamaris? I do see your hand up.
Sure, I'll go before the chief. I just, in regards to the exemptions or if something doesn't apply, so that, that any exemptions from not parking something on the road would only apply if parking is allowed. So if parking isn't allowed, an exception or exemption wouldn't apply, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you. Mr. Laeger, I do see your hand raised, so after Chief Tamaris, we can go to you.
Yeah, thanks, Council, thanks, Mayor. Listen, this is, this is a difficult situation for the city. It's a difficult situation for the homeowners and, and parking is an issue on that street. We did, I just want to remind the council that we did hire JUB to do a study and they did make recommendations. We can certainly have short-term recommendations to accept and looking out some long-term goals, but I would encourage the council to make a decision because this did start with a safety concern, and ultimately, that's what we want to do, and even if it is an inconvenience to some of the homeowners, unfortunately, it sounds like it will be. My recommendation is to limit parking that allowed the most parking, which would be limiting parking to the west side of the street. There are some ordinances that do address commercial vehicles parking. They can park there for temporary loading and unloading. There can be no large vehicles parked within 60 feet of the intersection. The study shows that it's just a bad situation and, but that's my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman, okay, I'm sorry, let me see if Mr. Laeger still wanted to speak, and then we'll go to Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, the, the reason I raised my hand was, is Diana from across the street was trying to unmute or whatever. And she couldn't, she couldn't get in. The, the, the question I guess that I would ask is if the road was put in narrowed in violation of the ordinances at that time, it should have never been done that way in the first place. If the ordinances or the, or the codes came afterwards, then it, it's kind of the horse before the carriage kind of thing, and so it's a, it's a detriment. Parking has value, okay? And if the roads narrowed and you limit parking, we're going to see a drop in value. Okay, if the road had been done, or if the road had not been connected originally and left a dead end, this wouldn't have been a problem. And if it had been left a dead end, you wouldn't have a problem with emergency vehicles because it was a dead end. Okay, if it, if it, if you're going to widen the road, you go back into the having to move that water reduction pressure box and everything else. It, it's one of those things of you guys are, Chief, you probably know more than, than, than most of us, when did that come in to affect? Was that before the road was put in? Therefore, the road should have never been put in that way? Or did it come in after the fact? And it, and it's, and it's a, it's a, it's a detriment, you know, it's something that was brought in after the fact. That, it, it's, there's a fork in the road and, and we just need to figure out which one it is, because bottom line is, if we lose parking, we're going to lose value, and, and that, that's all there is to it.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Laeger. I do want to make one quick comment, though, that just because something was done wrong doesn't mean we don't have a responsibility to make it right at this point, but Chief Tamaris, and then if, do you have anything to add, Chief Tamaris, and then Mr. Councilmember Peterson would like to speak?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Chief, there were, we've got we've got A, B, C, and D there and choices. As I went through them, I think it was a C and D that limited to one side, but there were variations between, you have a recommendation, I guess, between the A, B, C, and D. Have you had an opportunity to read through those? I believe the last two are the ones that actually limited to one side, but there's a difference between the 28 and where it goes 34 feet wide or something like that. Sorry to spring that on you.
It would actually be the middle two. Option B is adopting, bringing it to current city standards, which is what the original resolution that you guys passed did. And option three is allowing parking on one side.
You mean C?
Oh, I'm sorry, C, yes.
Now, what's the difference between C and D?
D is widening the road.
So C is the, is the only one for one side?
Yeah, sorry, I should have, instead of A, B, C, and D, I should have used one, two, three, and four.
No, it's okay. I, I read, I'm sorry, here, I'm off, yeah.
My, my error.
I put a D when I went back through it as a variation on C, but thank you for clarifying that, Lisa. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Ms. Capping would also like to speak again. Oh, Ms. Capping, are you there?
Thank you. I would like to mention, we are talking about ordinances and what's allowed and what is not allowed. I would like to bring attention that even down north our street, that is wider. We are consistently dealing with full-size campers on the street that are there for months. We have trucks with boats attached on the street that sit out there for months, and I would also employ that perhaps we should just leave things as they are and actually encourage more policing or following of the ordinances that are already in place. And it's a safety issue with kids running out and about and large vehicles all along our street. It's in, it's not just, you know, a situation where the road narrows. I, we also had a vehicle on the street that was called about multiple times, that was out, tags were out of date, the tires were flat. Nothing happened for months. It was over a year before the sticker was finally placed on the car for it to be removed. So there's, you know, I really would appreciate more conversation about what we can do to make this neighborhood good because we will lose value if we start losing parking spots.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Capping. Chief Tamaris, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, absolutely. My point exactly, you're, you're concerned about vehicles being too wide on normal width streets. So now that's compounded by a street that is not a normal width, so if, if that's a concern, we can certainly take a look at that, but to your point, again, if you're upset about oversized vehicles in the normal areas, it's compounded by the narrow area, which is exactly why we're having these discussions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from council members? Okay, see none. Is there a motion? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Is there a motion on this action item?
What about option E?
Councilmember Peterson?
I'd move to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero one one, option C, which chooses one of the options identified in the technical memorandum to be included for parking on the city road. And as we understand it, this option C is parking on one side only during the specified width of the street during those, between those points. Lisa, I would ask, it was identified which side of the street? Was it, was it the west or the east side? Can you confirm that?
Parking would be allowed on the west side, restricted on the east side. That's the one, the option that gives the most parking spaces.
So I would add parking on the west side restricted on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Sherman, I'll second.
Great, thank you. Is there any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. It seems like most of the bedrooms are on the east side, not the west side. And we're talking about a difference of one parking spot.
Okay, thank you.
I don't like any of the options.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have one aye, I mean, I'm sorry, we have one nay. So the, the majority passes and the ayes have it for parking on one side of the road, which we're looking at the west side of the road as it offers the most street parking available to the public.
So for clarification, ayes were Peterson, Sherman, and Nyhagen, and nay, Bobbit.
Yes, ma'am.
You forgot Councilmember Cleveland. I voted for aye.
Cleveland was an aye, correct.
Oh, sorry.
So four ayes, one nay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next is item about on body worn cameras authorization resolution, and Chief Tamara's is going to present on that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The Washington Legislature through R C W ten one oh nine oh one oh has authorized the use of body worn video cameras in law enforcement. And they provided specific regulations and exemptions for body worn cameras, recordings as public records. And the College Place Police Department has established such policies regarding the use of body worn cameras. And they comply with the R C W. So therefore, I am asking the City of College Place to authorize the deployment of body worn video cameras by the College Place Police Department pursuant to R C W ten one oh nine oh one oh.
Great, thank you, Chief Tamara. So we're gonna go through council members for any questions or comments. And we will begin with Councilmember Bobbit.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Councilmember Cleveland?
No questions or comments, other than I really like this and appreciate it being presented.
Councilmember Peterson?
I just add, thank you, Chief, for your work on this. We've had comments this last week from wide-ranging outside of our community giving their positive feelings towards this and their respect for our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherman?
Yep, I'll echo Lauren. I've heard a lot of great things and the Union Bulletin coverage was awesome, too. So nice work.
And I will also agree with that. There's been a lot of positive feedback, even in meetings that I've attended on whole other topics. People have been bringing it up. They're quite excited that someone stepped up and hope that it'll be something that'll follow throughout the valley. So thank you. So with that in mind, I believe Councilmember Bobbit said he would like to make a motion.
About Councilmember?
You left me out.
Oh, Councilmember Nyhagen, I am, my apologies.
That's all right. I, I have heard just excellent comments and I, I certainly support it. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion.
All right, then.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash zero twelve, authorizing the use of the body worn cameras for the College Place Police Department.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, it is unanimous. The motion has passed and is carried. Thank you very much, Chief Tamara's, again, and please give our thanks to your team for their willingness to
Absolutely.
To step up.
And, and on behalf of myself and the, and the rest of my officers, they are grateful to have the cameras as a tool and we couldn't have done it without your support. And we know it was a huge financial commitment, but I think it was a good commitment to just in, improve transparency and trust in the public. So thanks again for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next item is the agreement with Anderson Perry for topographical survey and bathroom redesign at Lyons Park. And Mr. Hartwig is going to share about that.
Thank you, Mayor. We went out for requests for proposals from engineering firms for design work at, for improvements at Lyons Park. We just wanted to get started. Anderson Perry was selected. And so we wanted to get started with just the baseline information that, that's needed before we do any design. And that is the topographical survey where they, they, they survey the ground, get the levels and so forth, get the structures that are already there and trees, all that type of stuff, into a usable engineering format. We need that before we do anything else. So we, we went out and asked them to give us a price for the topo. And then also we added the, some improvements to the restrooms. If you've been in those restrooms, you'll know they are in dire need of, of some work. And so what you have before you is their proposal. And basically, we're looking at twenty thousand dollars for this work that will give us the topo and preliminary design on the restrooms. I'd open it up for any questions, if anybody has any.
Great, thank you. Let's go through council members. Councilmember Bobbit, questions or comments?
Thank you, Paul.
Councilmember Cleveland?
I guess one question, what kind of improvements, other than say visual, are we hoping there?
Well, we, we've got, we've got funding applications in for the state. And Mike might be able to jump in here later. But we've got funding applications in for work on the pond, work on storm improvements, splash pad, playground equipment, a walking path, several, several improvements. Besides that, we, we need to do irrigation improvements. We need to do electrical improvements. And ultimately, a lot of this project, working this project is gonna tear up both parking lots. So that's gonna need, those are gonna need to be done. There are significant improvements that we're looking at and we're trying to scrape together the funding. And we're waiting to hear from legislature, probably toward the end of the session, where they'll let us know if the projects we submitted are on the approved list. Mike, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, certainly. So two, so the two R C O grant applications, we scored great with. So I feel that there isn't a threat to them. Our C O A application, number one was for, that was through the Washington Wildlife Rec Program. That was for five hundred thousand. And that one basically delves with establishing the splash pad, doing inclusive playground equipment. So it would have some modules for residents with disabilities with a nature play theme. Also, new restroom and picnic shelter. The, the other grant, which is the R C O Land Water Acquisition Fund, that was for another five hundred thousand. Say a first grant I mentioned, we scored number seven in the entire state on, which is excellent because there were about close to ninety applications on the first one. The second one, which is the L W C F, that helps fund separating the pond from Garrison Creek with like a dam to control water between the two. So that will help prevent the silt and issues. And then also would construct a fishing dock for youth fishing waters and then a trail around the perimeter of the, of the Sud Park. We do have a local match of real estate excise tax we're using. And I would also say general funds as well. We are putting in additional grant money into Sherwood Trust. We should hear about that this summer because some of what is unfunded has to do with the softball field. So with that, we're, we've had meetings with Park Arbor and Recreation Board on that. And we've engaged with the softball league essentially on what is waning and what isn't waning. And pretty much, they were saying like, uh, uh, like a grassy surface, say as a backstop. So it could also be used for the practice on the softball and then also soccer. That is where it was arrived at, but that element of is unfunded. So we're trying to get Sherwood Trust and we're trying to get some other last minute grants. Because as we all know, the longer you do a project, the more it costs. So this engineering is the first step of that because we need to know what we're getting into, especially since we want to put some better electrical in the park so we could better serve our growing farmers market and movies at the park. And this is like the first step of that. But yeah, we're positioning this thing. So once we have all grants and everything chained together, the idea is to go construction either between later this year or early next year, depending on how the engineering gets done, but moving full steam ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be coming back with additional contracts as we get further along.
Right, Councilmember Peterson?
No questions.
Councilmember Nyhagen?
No questions, thank you, Paul.
Councilmember Sherman?
No questions.
Okay. If you have any other questions or comments, anybody that I passed, please use the button to raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Councilmember Cleveland?
I'll motion to approve agreement with Anderson Perry for topographical survey and redesign of restrooms at Lyons Park for an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second, Councilmember Peterson?
Great, thank you. My apologies, any other discussions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, unanimous. The ayes have it, the motion is passed.
Were we supposed to bark for that one, Norma? I could.
That's the, I thought I was gonna make it all the way through this without never having an interruption like that. But leave it to the two little lovelies. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Public Works Director Position Professional Recruitment. Ms. Dorian's going to present on that.
I'm gonna have to hurry through because I may have the same problem any minute. All right, we originally talked about this last time at the council workshop about using a professional recruitment company to provide us with full-service recruitment for the Public Works Director Position when Mr. Hartwig leaves us. So we've received three proposals, one from A C S Professional Staffing, one from J L H Group, and a third from Proffman. They were all reviewed and graded. And Proffman Executive Recruitment was selected based upon the cost, their evidence of success in recruiting similar positions, experience in recruiting for municipalities. They clearly show extensive evidence of experience in recruiting for similar positions and they offer a one-year guarantee if the semifinalist leaves, or excuse me, if the selected finalist leaves or if they're terminated for cause within the first year, they will conduct a replacement search with no additional professional fees. So we are asking that council would approve that the city enter into an agreement with Proffman to provide full-service recruitment for the Public Works Director Position.
Thank you, Ms. Dorian. We're gonna go through council members for any questions or comments, but I think Mr. Bobbit stepped away. So we're gonna start with Mr. Cleveland.
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Bobbit?
No questions.
Councilmember Cleveland?
No questions, but I think this is a good investment and I appreciate staff wanting to get some assistance with some folks that have a lot of great experience in finding, you know, the right candidate for the job. So I think it's an excellent investment. Our other experiences by going through a professional recruitment firm have been very positive. So just in full support of it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Full, full support here, too. It was nice to go through the workshop here this last week and remind us of the successes that we've had using this format.
Thank you. Councilmember Nyhagen?
I agree, but they're going to have to go a long, long, long way to replace Paul Hartwig. Thank you, Paul, for your service. He's been great.
You're here. Councilmember Sherman?
I have a question. Do we know approximately how many trips they're planning on taking down from Issaquah or what the travel cost will be? And that is included in the, I mean, there are some additional. The actual professional fee is seventeen thousand five hundred. And then they add like a high and a low for the different extra reimbursable expenses. They are willing to do some remotely or based upon our preference to come here, to meet directly with us. So let's see, the nine fifty per trip. Okay. So I would assume as many times as we'd like to pay for. Well, it's definitely nice when they're here. I was just curious. Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion? Councilmember Peterson?
I'd move to authorize resources manager to enter the City of College Place into an agreement with Proffman Executive Recruitment, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to provide recruitment services for the Public Works Director Position.
Councilmember Cleveland, second.
Are there any other discussions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And the next item is a resolution of support for a community heart to, heart and soul grant. Mr. Rosatell is gonna present on that.
Yeah, so this grant application is to Community Heart and Soul Foundation. And basically, they help fund like a community outreach and strategic plan update processes. So back in two thousand seventeen, around the time I first started, we did the strategic plan process and then two years and we did the update in the beginning of two thousand nineteen. We are now two years out from the end, so we need to do another check-in update. And the plan is, is to do the update process essentially going, I would say, April into July. Because the one, I would say the one little element that we've had in past years, just critically thinking about it, in talking with other city managers, is that when you think about the, with the strategic plans, we were going through the process and adopting them after basically going through the budget process. And really, a lot of communities do that as like the pre-. through the budget process and really a lot of communities do that as like the preamble to the budget process. So the goal is hopefully by getting this grant to basically do the whole outreach process prior to the budget process, which we really start to get deeper into in July and August and then they'll inform the budget process. The past two times we've gone through Mr. Lawson, I plan, reach out to him again on that one, but yeah, we're just at the two-year mark and this is a way to give grant funding to help in that endeavor. And I also want to mention that the, the Wall Wall Valley Blue Zones and College Place Lions Club, they're willing to sign as co-sponsors to this grant application.
Start with Councilmember Bobbitt for questions or comments.
No questions.
Councilmember Cleveland?
No questions.
Councilmember Peterson?
No questions.
Councilmember Nyhagen?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherman?
No questions.
Okay. So if there's any other discussion, please just raise your hand. Otherwise, do we have a motion? We have motion on this resolution? Councilmember Sherman?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty one dash zero one three, which authorizes and supports an application to Community Heart and Soul Seed Grant Program by the Orton Foundation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Councilwoman Nyhagen, second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, the eyes have it and the motion is passed. Thank you, Mr. Rosatello. We're going to move on to your next resolution of support for an AARP Community Challenge Grant.
Hey, thank you. So what this grant would be for would be for around roughly $20,000 and the idea behind this is to put in some free community wifi sites at some of our community parks and then the municipal campus and looking at past projects that the AARP Community Challenge Grant has funded. They've actually gone along these lines. I had a very good discussion with Randall Brungis, who works for Pacai Net, lives in town and is on plan and commission and then Todd Brandenburg and they're willing to essentially work out of the deal where that, where they're going to be running, they would run basically fiber on their dime to the parks, but then the grant would help fund essentially some of the equipment needed to do good wireless at the, on the community parks. The community parks that would be covered by this would, they'll be in the grant application are Lyons Park, Kiwanis Park, Veterans Park, out at the Homestead Development and then the municipal campus. I really think this will be key as we have our movies at the park and farmers markets down at Lyons Park and a lot of communities are starting to do this, operating the free wifi. So that is what we're going to try to do, pursue a grant to make this happen.
All right, thank you. Let's go through council members. So Councilmember Bobbitt?
No questions. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Councilmember Cleveland?
I believe there's supposed to be sometime in the future, a new park created off of 12th Street where that old gas regulating station was. Has there been any consideration to extending wifi to that park once it's finally created?
Oh, we, we could. The, the reason we chose these parks was basically just utilization of them, which you can track like through Strava, which is a walking and bicycling application. It, those are more utilized areas, but I think definitely we could expand this in the future to include that parklet property. The, the, the only other thing I would say with that 12th Street parklet, that's a consideration, is we do want that parklot to be an area, I would say, where people can take a rest and break, whereas the parks, those are more conducive to playing sports, hanging out for longer periods. So that's why those parks are listed as the priority for this initial iteration.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Nyhagen?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Well, we skipped Lauren, but I'll go. So I guess I like that there would be better wifi at Lyons Park because we have the farmers markets and all like movies and stuff, but I'm having a hard time. Maybe it's because I'm really old, like thinking about wifi at parks. Because I'm thinking like that's when you should be doing the things that aren't on your phone or a device. And so, I mean, I get it. It's 2021, but it's, it's just an internal struggle. So I'll, I'll worry about it and you can talk to Lauren.
Councilmember Peterson, again, my apologies.
I'm wondering why there isn't 5G. What about wifi? Oh, no, that's, you know, it's interesting. You hear during this, I mean, even people who have limited access for, at WiHi at their, at their homes, sometimes I think they're able to, to utilize this for educational, you know, purposes or whatnot. So, yeah, anyway, thanks, Mike, for your hard work on this.
Yep.
I agree. What better way to do your homework than having to, than sitting outdoors at Lyons Park, right?
Well, well, I mean, that is the one thing I would like to add. I mean, when, when I was actually younger, my parents couldn't afford the internet and I mean, actually where I did some of my work was in my car at the park where I grew up at. So, so I mean, there are quite a few people who are out there who do need that as well. So.
Goodness, I'm not even going to talk about when I was a child, there was no such thing as internet. So.
I can even say that, Norma.
Say it as much as I can.
Goodness, the things we have passed through, right? Any other questions or comments? And if not, do we have a motion?
Councilmember Jerry, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty one dash zero one four, which authorizes and supports an application to AARP, the Community Challenge Grant.
I'll second.
Great. Any other discussion? They won't make me feel old. All right, seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the eyes have it. The motion is passed. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, let's see, moving on, there are no administrative reports tonight and there's no informational reports either. Before I ask if there's any other business before it goes fast through, I do want to mention real quick that, Mike, we're, we're getting a great response on the utility box reps.
Oh, yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of chatter about that and I don't know, I finally found them by just driving down College Avenue. And they definitely look great. So thank you for that idea and please, we'll need to send a, a thank you card to P1 FCU for their generous sponsorship on that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And so you all know, there was an interactive web map created as well. It was shared on social media. So folks that do want to do a walk and tour of it, you can click on the stars and then it has prying out of the artwork as well as like what was behind it and who was the artist. So there, there's nine level man college avenue from Mid-Johnure up to the intersection of Whitman.
Yeah, they, they look great. All right, is there any other business for good or the other? Ms. Nysel?
I just wanted to let everybody know that Carolyn is going to be leaving us. She's made a great choice for herself, but it's going to break my heart. So just, our next council meeting, the 23rd, will be the last council meeting. She's with us.
What do you have to say about for yourself, Carolyn?
Put me on the spot. Wow.
They're either tears of happiness or?
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm going to miss everybody though at College Place. You guys are all pretty special.
Well, we
We'll miss you.
For all your hard work, our farmers markets between you and Lisa have just taken off and we certainly will miss you in more ways than one.
Here, here.
I will miss all you guys too.
But we sincerely wish you, you know, success. I understand your job is something and you trained in, so wishing you the best success and that you will, I, I know you will benefit then as much you benefited us. So they're lucky and I hope they know it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Cleveland, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye. If there's no objections, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh two, right on the second. Bye-bye.
Bye, Ron.
Thanks, everyone.